Good evening, everyone. Today is August 14th, 2023. It's the Finance and Operations Committee meeting. We're meeting at the Nashua High School North Boardroom, and it is around 6:07. And I'm going to ask Ms. Brown if she could take the attendance, please.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Ms. Brown is here. We have a quorum.
Thank you. I'm going to ask if no one minds if we can go out of order a little bit and just have the presentation. We've had Sun Life coming back to us and giving us another presentation. And with that, I'll ask them to please dive. Nobody objects? Okay, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Chris Slingerland, for the record.
Hi there. My name's Tony Jam with Sun Life. Well, one, thank you for having us here again. Schedule. We have been in a conversation with Sean over the last few months on, really about the Active Pure product. But as we were talking to Sean, there seemed like to be a need on energy management. You know, one thing that we have been seeing over the last two years as, you know, new guidance came out on air purification and air quality, there's a huge correlation between energy management and the air quality that school is seeking. So, you know, just talking to Sean and talking to other school district, what we have been focusing on over the last two and a half years is really creating a platform that allows schools to operate in an efficient manner, but at the same time, creating safe and comfortable environment for students and faculty as well. So without that being said, you know, just let me give you an oversight of who Sun Life is. You know, what Sun Life is, we're really in the energy efficient business, hoping to create a healthy and safety environment, at the same time allowing the school to operate efficiently. We focus on helping school reduce student absenteeism through our core technology, Active Pure. We have a platform that allow facility manager and school district to efficiently manage the energy and take a lot of that saving and reinvest it back into the school as well. In addition, all of our solutions are long-term permanent solution that, you know, that should last with the school facility as well. So with that being said, this is an overview of what we're offering or what our platform looks like. The platform's called E360, and it's really a three-legged stool approach. One is Active Pure, which Nashua School District have already procured through some of their school. And Active Pure, again, is our air quality technology that purify the air and surfaces as well. So the next two components is really around energy management and indoor air quality. On the indoor air quality side, it's really, it's really a platform that allows school district to assess the work that they have put in over the last few years, the million dollars that they put in HVAC, the million dollars that they put in into Active Pure to see, is it really working? So our indoor air quality sensors allow schools not only to have the confidence that they have a really good air quality, but also to be proactive in managing their overall indoor air quality as well. The last piece is on the energy management side. You know, the thing that I mentioned before is, school really have a lot of old buildings, and a lot of the old buildings have really old controls, old system, and really made it really inefficient for facility people to manage both indoor air quality and energy at the same time. So our platform combine all three approaches and allow, you know, facility people like Sean to say, hey, here's what my air quality looks like, and here's how much I'm spending on energy on here as well to get that air quality. And on top of that, it goes above and beyond. We manage lighting, we manage temperature, we tie it all back in and make it really easy and useful for Sean and his team to effectively manage the building in a constructive manner. Any questions so far? So, I'm sorry.
Any questions from the committee at this point?
Nope, go ahead.
So through our conversation with Sean, here's what we have uncovered. Currently, the district does not have a central platform to monitor energy consumption across school-wide district. They have multiple platforms across multiple software. So in order for Sean and his team to figure out what is, you know, where we're spending the most amount of energy, they have to aggregate all up through several platform. HVAC and lighting controls are not available by all school. I believe some of the newer schools have controls and lighting for both HVAC and lighting, but some of the old schools do not have this capability. So there's opportunities to make those buildings a lot more efficient there. I think one of the challenges that Sean's having right now, he's working with a local consulting firm on providing energy savings. You know, there's really no method right now that Sean has in his availability is to assess and verify that the strategies that are being put in place are actually saving the energy that they're looking for. In addition, I know the school district is having, you know, some challenges in getting energy incentive rebates from the local utility company as well. And then lastly, not to my knowledge, I don't think the school district has anything to monitor indoor air quality real time right now. I know we, Sun Life have provided an air quality test before, but that was more on a environmental test. What we're trying to do is put a solution in place to monitor real time for every minute what the indoor air quality looks like as well. Any question from the board? Sean, is anything that I'm missing from what we have talked about? Okay. So why invest in E360? I believe the district have already got a component of it, which is the air quality technology to improve the indoor air quality. I think the other missing component will really effectively provide immediate ROI for the school. Just by being able to monitor your building, you're able to update your agent facility. So just think about it like a smart home system. You know, you're able to walk in, it assess what your temperature should be, what the lighting should be when you're there. We're doing exactly the same thing, but at a fraction of cost of having to invest in a big BMS system, a building automation system. And from there, we're looking at a range of anywhere from 10% to 30% in savings. It will allow the school district to have predictive maintenance, meaning that they could identify problems on both on their critical machinery before they even happen, so avoiding costly repairs and future capital expenditure as well. It will allow the district on a real-time basis to know exactly how much they're spending on energy and where they're spending it on a real-time basis. And then also allow you to monitor any capital improvement projects. So if the board is coming in and say, hey, let's update our HVAC, let's update our LED, let's do the new chiller, are we getting those ROI that we're expecting? And this technology we have will provide that as well. In addition, like I mentioned, you know, we will have the ability to monitor your indoor air quality real time, and it serves really two purposes. One is to justify the investment you have made in Active Pure and also the HVAC you put in. And then second, it's really almost a risk management to where you're showing that you're doing everything you can to improve the indoor quality, and here's the data for that. And it goes back historically as well. So this is an oversight of the platform, you know, a review of the platform. It's called E360. You know, it allows you to monitor energy. And the way we do it is, you know, we'll put a meter at the control panel of the building. And we could actually go down even deeper if you want to monitor, you know, how much that HVAC that you put in, how much energy you're using, we go down to granular level detail. But generally, we put a meter at the main control panel and monitor the energy real time. We'll put indoor air quality sensors. Some school district I know really wants to put indoor air quality sensors in each classroom, but some school due to cost restriction might want to just know what indoor air quality is in key areas as well. In addition, you know, now that we also have lighting controls, be able to control the lighting and thermostat. So Sean remotely, if somebody calls in and say, hey, the temperature here is really cold, he could log in, remotely adjust the temperature. Or what Sean and his team could do is set the schedule of what the temperature look like based on the building occupancy and usage months ahead of time. So it's always, you know, automatic. Same thing with lighting as well. You know, lighting, we have seen, I have seen buildings, you know, when people are not even in the room, the lights are still on. So just setting up controls and controls on lighting and temperature will really help do the scale efficiency. I know Sean has some controls already in place. Now you combine both monitoring and control in place. So now you know how much energy you're using, you can control it. This where our platform become really useful. Now you could put strategies in place to really say, hey, you know, from this time to this time, we don't need to use energy because we're going to get a surcharge from the energy company. Let's put in strategies in place to say, let's dim the hallway lighting where people aren't in it, shut off lighting where people aren't in the room, or turn off the HVAC or that, just to save energy so we avoid any surcharges from the utility company. And this is, you know, each school that we deal with is, the operation's a little different. So we will work with the school on setting up the strategies in place. You know, we do have off-the-shelf template or off-the-shelf strategy that we put in for Sean, but we know that each school and each building is unique, and we'll work with them on putting strategy in place as well to make the building as efficient as possible. So how does this fix, you know, I think the issues I brought in past? You know, being of the, you know, the system will allow you to monitor energy and manage it across all facility under one platform. I think right now Nashua is, all the ability to monitor energy is scattered across multiple platform, making really hard for Sean to see a huge oversight of where the energy is coming from. Have controls automatic in place in all buildings. The beauty about our platform versus going to some more of the regular, like a train, a seam and Johnson control, it's wireless. In order to put controls in new buildings, or if you say you have a new building that has some form of fixture in there, in order to get controls, they would have a hard wire in, so they have to rip down the wall, put the wires in, put it in. Ours wireless, we have the capability to be off your network as well, so we could be seller. So from a cybersecurity perspective, we're not on your network at all. Measurement verification, this is critical for what I think Sean would be critical in terms of getting the incentive rebate from the utility company, because what this platform will do is allow you to show the utility company, and we will work with the utility company on your behalf, to make sure that we are complying to their program to get the incentive rebate, to show them, here's the saving that we're getting. And second, you know, if you're working with a consulting company saying that, hey, update your HVAC and you're going to save 20%, update your LED lighting, you're going to save another 20%, or update your chiller, you're going to save another 20%, we could put all that into our measurement verification tool and show them the actual saving that you're actually getting. So now, if you're not getting the same that you want, you go back to your energy consultant and say, hey, it's not what, we're not saving what you want, and audit them that way. Or if it's working, then you could justify to the board, say, look, you spent million dollars on these capital improvement, we're actually, it's actually working, we're saving the money. I'm not sure if there's any plan on renewable energy. I believe there's three solars, and right now, what we could do is verify how much you're paying for the solar. So if you're buying solar from a farm, what you could end up doing is, they might be overcharging you. Our program will allow you to monitor that as well. So if the solar company is saying you're using 10,000 kilowatt for the month, our program's showing you're only using six, then there's a variance, right? So this will allow you to be able to audit them as well. In addition, you know, you could be able to store excess solar as well. We have the capability to store the excess solar. So in time period where you're getting a huge surcharge from the energy company, you could tap into that storage and put that as part of our strategy as well. Any question so far on this? And the last piece is indoor air.
One second, Ms. Brown.
Sure.
So when you look at the overall energy savings and different things, does it break, can you, you can see the overall cost savings or different places where energy is being inefficient? Can you also look at the energy waste by specific schools or specific zones in schools?
And we could get it down, so I think Nashua has about 20 schools, somewhere around there. Seventeen. We could have all location at the building, at the macro level, how much energy you're using, all seventeen locations, and then we go down to each individual location and see. And if, depending on the level of granule, we could actually go down to each individual machinery that's causing it, driving it up. Yeah, critical system, and really do an attribution on that way. We actually had one building where we saw, one of our client, we saw was using a lot of energy, and we figured out the exact zone or sack wing of the building. We noticed that they were opening the doorway for the room, and the HVAC was just going out and heating up the whole thing, so we told them to shut the door, and we saw the energy goes down on that end. And that's the type of audit that we could end up, that will help Sean and his team to manage the facility better on that end. What that does is avoid operating costs and avoid the machine running overtime when unnecessary doesn't have to.
Thank you.
Question. Are you all set? Okay, on this, do you have any districts the same size as ours, 17 schools?
Seventeen school, we have one. Yeah.
Okay, so you've got one a little bit more and one a little bit less. What was the average savings that they saw, and how many years does it take to see the savings?
I think some of the savings, you know, so there's the initial savings that you have right now, which is just, it all depends on each building.
Just an average?
Anywhere from 10% to 30% is what we're looking at. I think that's conservative. I think, you know, there's some schools that we, for example, I'm working with a school in Indiana, Warren Township. Their annual operating budget is $25 million, $5 million dedicated to utility. So they have a huge amount of savings on that end. Where even, I think they were spending around anywhere from $5 to $6 per square foot on energy, they were able to, like, immediately was able to trim about 20%, 20% to 30% of that.
Would we be able to get some references from, on districts that if the administration wanted to call and ask questions about their savings and how happy they are with the program? Just for reference.
Sure. And I could show you, and one example at the end, I show you a school that we actually helped them out on.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Mr. Smith?
I'll have a little bit more to say afterwards, but I want to, I do want to say, and I don't want to steal your thunder, we are going to test this out at a, I'm from Missouri when it comes to stuff like this. So we're going to test it out Fairgrounds Middle School. And the beauty of doing it at that school is it has a brand-new HVAC system in there, and about a little over half of it has induct Sun Life system in it already. The other half of the school doesn't, so we can compare the two, pick the one who's taking readings of indoor air quality and that sort of stuff. So aside from references, and this platform probably hasn't been out that long.
Platform has been around for eight years. So, but my partners have been mostly in California, so a lot of our references are going to be in California. But we do have schools in Texas that we're working with, we have schools in Indiana where, like we mentioned as well.
It just kind of, we're working with Fairgrounds Middle School, so we see the new and the old, but it just kind of gives us an idea, because if this is something that the district wants, it's going to come back to us anyway. And so we're going to ask the same questions. Do you have any reference? Do you have anything to show us that people are really happy, that the system is working, they're able to control, they've had it maybe for two years, so they could see the difference already, the savings? Because, you know, we put it in because we wanted the better air quality. If you're telling us that we could save money, have better air quality, be able to control everything, so we can see what schools, how much they use, and how much we can condense more, then of course, you know, we're going to ask for the references and to see the savings in the schools. You know, that's a district about our size, you know. Okay. Anybody, you have any other questions? Okay, thank you. Continue, thank you.
This is the indoor air quality. And again, like on the energy management side, we could either see what we have on the indoor air quality, and we'll show you a demo of this product. We're not, we're just going through the presentation, kind of what we have. But basically what it does, it gives you an indoor air quality index based on a few of the contaminants we're looking at, which is PM 215, CO2, humidity, VOCs, and then from there, we create an indoor air quality index. We could show you what the indoor, indoor, indoor air quality at the district level is, and then we could actually drill it down to each individual level of building, and then depending on where you put the sensor, you could actually drill it down to individuals' room as well. Next thing, Chris? Typically, I think there's a, by Energy Star, there's a survey done in 2006. You know, why, you know, schools typically spend about 70% of their energy, it's really from HVAC, and that's why we're correlating indoor air quality with our energy consumption. So if we able to, you know, tie in indoor air quality with our energy usage, you know, the school district will be able to have some significant saving here as well. And that's why we focus on indoor air quality energy management. So here's a typical example of a school environment, how our system work. You know, at 9:00 AM, you know, our system is able to send an alert to Sean that, hey, your HVAC is not working the way it should be, based on saying, seeing that the thermostat for a particular room is at 74 degrees at four to five minutes, six percent higher than the cool setting. From there, it will trigger an alert to Sean, say, hey, you should check out this HVAC, something is not working. So this is really where we're seeing predictive maintenance, right? We're putting meters or sensors on critical machinery that we're tracking to make sure that they're working correctly. Another good example could be a refrigerator. So if you have a refrigerator with all the food, and over the weekend, for some reason, if that thing shuts down without an alert, you know, you come back, all that food's ruined. We have schools that have done that in the past. Well, in this case, in our system, if you're putting a sensor on this refrigerator, it will send an alert to Sean, say, hey, the temperature here is off, please check it out before you avoid any disaster on that. Second is tying in indoor air quality with energy management. So I've been working with Sean. One of the biggest costs of energy is bringing outside air, right? When you bring outside air, you have to heat and cool it. You know, the advantage of outside air is that it controls the level of CO2. That's the only thing that could control the level of CO2. So we call it demand ventilation. Monitoring your level of CO2 will allow you to have a rule based on when you bring in outside air, right? Right now, I believe the district is bringing outside air, just really for more comfort and safety reason. But if you're monitoring the level of CO2 based on ashtray guidance on when you bring it in, to level, if you're monitoring levels due to, based on ashtray guidance, you know, you should be able to determine when to bring outside air and when not. So making a lot more cost-effective on heating and cooling as well. And then, and then another example is, you know, avoiding surcharges. You know, utility companies across the board will charge you a peak demand surcharge if you're using energy when everyone's using energy, so, right? So we put in strategy in here saying that, hey, look, you're about at 75% capacity of your peak demand, you should really do something right now to reduce your energy consumption. Either we do that manually, or we work with your control system to do that automatically as well. So these are just examples of some of the stuff how we could fit into your operation in terms of improving your indoor air quality and reducing your energy consumption as well. And here's one of the school that we work with. So Apprentice School, you know, is a school that we work with, and what, really what we end up doing is really is that they had started, you know, with a new utility company, and the utility company started charging them for time of use. So what time of use is, is basically depending on the day or time they're using a day, they're going to charge you a different rate. And with that being said, the energy bill went up 40%, right? So with our E360 platform, we're able to identify when different rates that they're charging, right, and what different times when they're using energy, and from there, we're figuring out when they're using it, how much they're being charged each hour. From that alone, we're able to reduce their energy saving about 44,000 kilowatt, roughly around 20%, you know, decrease in the energy bill from that as well. So with that being said, that's really the presentation. If there's any other question, I'm going to answer them now, before Chris will show you a live demonstration of the platform.
Members of the committee, is there any questions? Mr. Smith?
Just a few comments, just to bring you up to speed. So we do have building automation controls virtually in all our schools, there's different levels of it. So the last, we have Mount Pleasant, that really all we monitor is the boiler room. May Dunstwill, Birch Hill, kind of the same thing on the office, so we're not, at the end of this current construction project, we'll be able to do all that. That's just monitoring the HVAC systems. It is true that we don't have sensors that measure a lot of things. Some of the larger spaces in some of our schools will measure the CO2 levels, like in a cafeteria or gymnasium, so that it'll tell the air handling system when to turn on, turn off, speed up, that sort of thing. So we have some of those capabilities. We know what the temperature is pretty much in every space in the schools, maybe not the janitor's closet, but all the classrooms and offices, that sort of thing. But that system's kind of standalone, it's just for controls, and we can go on there and see, if somebody calls in, say, my room's hot, we can go online and see, oh, the fans are turned off, or then we find out that something's not working that we should. It's kind of how that part of it works. It does not, part of it, Ms. Johnson asked me, I don't know, a month ago, so all this money we spent on the induct system of Sun Life isn't working? Oh, yeah, it's, the only measurement we have really is to look at absenteeism, and we just haven't had the system in place long enough to do that. Last winter is when we installed it in eight schools. So maybe a year or two down the road, we can look at before and after absenteeism. Taking into consideration, we just came through a pandemic, so that could affect things. So energy savings was a big part of what they talked about, and how we measure energy savings and whether or not the energy performance company has succeeded in what it promised to do is looking at the bills after the fact. So we receive all the energy bills, we read them, we have a program, we put all the stuff in, you can do nice fancy graphs and charts and stuff like that. But again, that's after the fact, it's not telling us real time what's happening. We've had a few cases where the water bill, for example, one of the high schools was enormous. In fact, the utility, it was so large, the utility called us and said, what's going on here? So we, eventually we checked into it, we were not aware of it until we got the bill, and then, and that real-time data is missing. We can set the schedules for our HVAC systems now. Lightings, there's not a centralized control system, but we have the more recent LED lights, we've, it's all on a, change them by classroom as you go around. Only other note I had was, oh, rebates, you talked about rebates. Apply for all the rebates we're aware of. Sometimes utility companies will come to us and say, did you know, you know, you're doing this big project in the southern part of the city, we can, we can give you some rates for natural gas. Or where are those? Where we have had some issues is getting the proper credits from utilities for the solar. We consume maybe 50% of what we produce, the other half of it goes into the grid. The way the system is set up is, we should be getting a credit for that. It's not going to be credited the same rate that you buy it from, you know, if you're paying, I don't know, we're paying these days, 20 cents for a kilowatt hour, if you're lucky. It'll be some fraction of that that we get back, but at least we get something back because we're producing, we're an energy producer at this point. That's going to get bigger and bigger as we add solar, you know, the new middle schools. Put it in other places too. So that's one area that we can see real time, probably I think with the program you're talking about, is what we're producing, what we're consuming, and then, yeah. Again, this is, we see it after the fact, because we get electrical bill, and it says, oh, you produced this much, and this is how much you imported from the utility. So between those three numbers, we can tell how the system's working. The good news is, we are saving money on solar. Chief Operating Officer would say we're not saving enough, and that might be very true. You know, I'm not sure. We, of course, hired EEI to do the energy performance improvements at both high schools. But I can tell so far, we are, again, saving quite a bit of money. I think certainly in the mid-20s, in terms of percent, 25% for electricity. Our consumption has gone down. Had some problems with the meters for natural gas, so that's kind of unknown in that area. Want to tie in what we're actually doing to what they're hitting is, what their program can do. I think the beauty I see is it brings it all together. We do all these things independently, they're all independently. Just a couple of them are not real time. The only that's real time is the energy controls. A fan dies in the B wing of the South High School, there's no alarm that comes on and says, you know, go check this out.
I agree, like the value of having a centralized system that's all the same throughout makes sense for you, make it much easier to monitor. Do you have the manpower to monitor a system like that?
Yes, that's a good question. What I think I heard is, if something is amiss, you get an alarm. So I'll probably take my cell phone, throw it away at some point, but I'll probably be getting alarms every, or Gary Connors, or somebody in my organization, we can spread the wealth out, so one person's not hammered all the time.
Depending on what that alarm is, the beauty of this system is we can automate some of that too. Fine-tune that automation, so we'll work with Sean and his team, put in various levels of automation depending on, you know, what those alarms are. This software is, it's also an agnostic approach to building, all of the buildings within the district. So, you know, if we're working on seven or eight different platforms throughout the district right now, enroll all of those enroll all of those platforms under one umbrella and all that data is under one umbrella and then we.
Not just software agnostic, well, what Chris is saying that we could read, can read, is that if Sean, as Sean has mentioned, if he has controls or hardware or in place, then we're not going to offer that. We could just tap into the software for that control and pull that information in. So there's no additional, you know, hardware that you have to buy for us. You know, it's really more of a system integration with the, you know, the initial cost would be on that end. And I also want to touch on Paul's, you know, question on how much you're going to save. I say 10 to 30%, you know, initially, but ongoing, you know, you're going to have the ongoing same as well. What we will factor in when we're doing our return ROI calculation is the future cost of utility will be, you know, two years down the road, three years down the road. Because utility companies will provide you how much they're going to raise your rate on, on that as well.
Brian, continue.
So actually, I think you just, you answered my next question. So, and I didn't really understand that from the presentation. So this is a software program that can integrate everything we've already got. We wouldn't have to be adding anything to the build, to the buildings. Because I was wondering what we were going to do when we've got so many different buildings of different ages with different systems working together. So we don't have to come in and redo the lighting system for every single building with the hardware.
What we could do is for buildings that are renovated and has a, you know, a more advanced technology, all we have to do is just talk to it, right? For buildings that have maybe old lighting control, like the time clock, we could put a smart sensor on that so we could read the information and make it a smart system. Or buildings that don't have anything, then that's where you will buy the controls from us. Whether you buy it from us or you buy it from someone else, you know, it's really the software that integrate everything else all together on that end.
And actually, I have a question for Dan and Sean. A while ago, before I was even here, you guys had like a, somebody who would go around and make sure the lights are turned off in the building, called like the Dark Lord or something like that. I think there was a nickname for him. What was, like, did you find that there was any savings when you were doing that kind of thing?
Yes, actually, so we hired a company, its initials were EEI, but it's not the same as we're using now, out of Texas, and they attacked first human behavior. Because leave lights on, you know, they forget to turn, you know, whatever. So he was a prince of darkness, by the way. We actually, we actually gave him a Darth Vader helmet to wear. So he, he was out there late at night and just checking for what people left on. As we got a little more sophisticated in that approach, we had him listening to bands that were running, that didn't need to be running in the middle of the night. Found out after the fact he was definitely one here, so he had to, turning around to hear it. But it, I mean, it was very successful. We, I think we, 10 years in, we had saved $8 million. As we got further into it, they would make suggestions on, okay, it looks like this. Bands with these pumps aren't operating properly, you know, it'd be good if you changed them out, you know, short return on investment for things like that. But it's a good system. I, I think, we, we don't do that anymore. We don't walk around. Many cases, we've used technology to do that for us. So if you're not in a room, the lights turn off.
And to touch on Sean's point, you know, behavioral issues is the number one cause of energy consumption. You know, if people don't understand their, their impact on the sustainability of the, of the school, if they don't understand the data, they will never change their behavior. With our system, you're able to show them, hey, here's your contribution to our, our savings. And that would drive, you know, slowly drive their behavioral changes of people as well.
Well, I think that shows your point that you said the biggest energy suck from that particular school was fixed by shutting a door in a hallway. And that's pretty significant change. Okay, thank you, guys.
I remember when we put that plan in place, bringing, I can't remember his name, but we hired to go around to the schools to make sure everybody with the habits, shut off the light, you're not in the room. But that's what technology was back then, a human being. Now we have sensors. So we would have more light sensors in the rooms too, that when you walk in, the lights go on. Do we have that now when you leave the room? Okay, so lights.
In every school, but many of them.
But a lot of them. So if you're, no one's in the classroom, the lights just go out. Okay. What, how many years is our solar good for? Our solar panel, 20 years?
They say nominally 20 to 25 years.
What happens?
There is a, an option that the city has after, it was five years, we could purchase them.
I think it's eight, eight years. Yeah.
So at some point, the city could, so right now, we're, I'm a conundrum right now. We're, we're producing all this energy only using half of it. The other thing we're waiting for is for battery storage to, the technology to catch up to us. It's not quite there, it's, it's getting there. Once we do that, then we can save all the solar we produced all day long and use it at nighttime instead of.
Well, I'm just kind of, I remember we talked about when we first got on the board before COVID, I think it was, we were talking about the solar energy. We voted on it on some of the schools. I remember that. And I'm just kind of curious the life of them. I don't know if I would buy them, but because we have to dispose of them after so many years, if their usefulness goes, because batteries aren't, they're not going to be good for 100 years.
Right, there is some degradation in, in how well they work over time. These 20 years, and they're responsible for making sure the panels work in those 20 years. Purchase agreement with them. And they'll come out and fix it.
Even if we purchase it? Or is only, if you lease them?
Good question. If we purchase it, I think it's probably on us.
It is, it is. It's, right now, it's owned by the investor. Got the big tax credit, that's why they did it in the first place. And also to, you know, cleaner. But, yeah, when, if we were to purchase it after eight years, then it would be on us to do that. Now, we'd probably hire, hire a company, maybe the same company that we're using now, whatever, to keep an eye on things, because I don't think we have the, the skill in-house to keep a, an array, solar array going.
Would it be beneficial for us to purchase it? Or would it be beneficial for us to lease it? Because when the lease is done, if the panels aren't good anymore, if something happens in between now and then, it's their responsibility, why should we take the hit on?
Because we could get more savings. There's a cost to them owning it, right? So if, if rates go up, electric rates go up, we have a built-in cost that we can buy it for. So you, you basically run the numbers. And if electric rates go way up in the next six years, then it probably would make sense to buy it. But you'd have to come up with the money to buy it. Which is not the full cost of the array, it's a depreciated cost.
Right, because you've paid off X amount because you're renting, basically renting them. So you would, like, if you lease a car, you, there's a residual value that you have at the end.
We're not necessarily paying for the array. It's a little different than leasing.
Right, but I.
Pay every month for that, but.
I get it, I get it. Any other questions? Okay. Mr. Smith, any other questions, concerns, comments?
Do you actually want to show us something else?
Five minutes, we'll show you. You want me to walk through it?
Yeah, so this is your landing page. Can everyone hear me? I think so. So this is the landing page of E360. So right now, this is our sandbox view. So these tiles that you see here, out the page, represent locations. So if we say we had 17 schools in the Nashville School District, each one of these tiles would represent each building, you know, that we have the ability to either monitor, control, so on and so forth. You'll see on the tile, it'll have pertinent information, the address, the name of that building. You'll have the outdoor temperature, weather. And then you'll also have the outdoor IAQ, outdoor air quality for that location. You'll have your daily peak demand centered in the middle.
All these, they're taking. Taken from the EPA website, so the EPA has a standard of what indoor air quality for a certain area code, C of code is. And we're pulling that data in and putting that in there. What we could do as well, if you want to get specific to your actual location, is put a monitor outside the building as well, so you could know exactly, hey, we're in Nashville South right now, what the indoor air quality is like versus just the general area of the facility.
Not relying on.
And, you know, and that's relevant, and that's relevant for, sorry, go ahead.
I'm thinking this is kind of a little different for the exterior air quality. Could they do something that have, is there any kind of reference point for when it's safe to send kids outside for recess and things like that?
I mean, this is what you would use it for. So in this case, it's really more, I was thinking more from facility management side. It's when you bring outside air in, right? So if the air quality is really bad outside, does Sean and his team want to bring those air quality in at all?
But to your point, right? If we wanted to set up a dashboard for stakeholders, so depending on what information you wanted the stakeholders to have, so it could be outdoor air quality, right? It could be the indoor air quality piece. And then if you wanted to show energy initiatives.
A temperature of, you know, your kids need to be in full snow suits in the middle of winter in New Hampshire.
Yeah, yeah. And what you do with that data, that's, I mean, you're already wrapping your head around, you know, the power of data. What can we do with it, right? What can we put from a strategy standpoint behind it? And see that in 30 minutes.
That's it.
So on the tiles, each icon down below is going to represent what controls you have or what you have from ability to monitor. So, you know, again, depending on what we, we start off with, it doesn't have to have the whole plethora of services that we offer. You know, maybe we don't choose to use the control piece. Maybe we don't choose to use the lighting. Have to put that in some type of capital plan over the next three years, right? So you don't have to load up on everything. We can start off with just the energy piece. So let me go into just the submetering report, the utility report. This landing page, it's also going to represent, here, let me just change the dates. It's also going to, this, this building happens to have solar. So on your top portion, you have your total electric energy KWs used, your peak demand, your total solar energy KWs, and then your total net, okay? We have the ability to pipe in water, natural gas, propane, you know, whatever we want to put in for utilities. Now, on this middle chart, green is what we're actually using for energy. The yellow shaded area is what we're using for solar. And then this red line is our outdoor temperature.
And that's, yeah, and that's critical because what you want to be able to see is, because temperature really drives how much energy you're using, right? So if it's, if it's, temperature is high and, I'm sorry, if your temperature is low and your energy consumption is high, then there's something going on, right? In this case, because you're not cooling or heating that much. So it's really good visual chart for us to see, you know, what's going on on this. And then on the heat map side right here, this is a really good overview of your energy consumption. Just a visual overview of what your energy consumption should look like. And Chris, so what you see going across is the number of hours in a day and going down is the, is the date in the month. So light shaded green, no energy being used. And as energy or sun being used, it gets darker and darker. And then when you're not using energy, it's going down. You can see here, it's pretty clean, hours of operations, you know, they start cooling and heating the building up at 4:30, and then later in the afternoon, it's cooling down. So from us, if we're doing a quick audit for you guys, what we'll do, we'll put in your energy consum, energy bill in here, pop in this chart and see what are the low hanging fruits that we could pluck in. What happened here before, this, this chart was all over place for this company. And what happened was they didn't realize that one, their chiller, which they thought wasn't running 24/7, was running 24/7. So they were having energy throughout, there was green throughout the night and they couldn't figure out why. So we're able to identify, it was a chiller that shouldn't be running 24/7, fix that up. And what we did is tune it up, right? We're constantly going to tune this up to, to answer Paul's question. We're constantly going to continue savings, trying to save them, tune it up. The more you tune it up, the better, the better you are at managing energies. Two main areas, one is the north and south, so we put a meter in there, you can see it. And then we actually drill it down to the individual HVAC of, of the, of the building. And then we actually broke it down to the AC units as well. So I think what we're going to do for Fair Ground is just one zone that has the new, new upgraded and the other one doesn't, we'll put air quality sensor in each zone and we'll track the energy on both sides as well.
The reason I'm asking is because come January, it will be a new board. And if this is something that you would like, that with Mr. Donovan and yourself and everybody talks about, it comes back to this committee and has to go back to the board, this is something that the district feels that they need, then it would be best to come back before the end of the year. So the whole thing, the whole process doesn't have to start all over again. Does the committee agree? So that's why, that's why I asked the date on it.
That may make sense, but it might also be something that you'd have to put in next year's budget cycle rather than, like, I don't know, that would be something that we could actually do right now.
Don't know, but I'm just saying that, you know.
They're not going to just give this to us, so there's, there's a cost to doing it.
I get it.
Fairgrounds, they're doing it at no cost to us. But if we're going to deploy something like this district wide, I'm sure we're talking in a capital improvement process.
Oh, capital improvement? That committee, that we, how much have we gotten from them?
That goes back to another office in City Hall that makes those decisions. But, yeah, that's how we, everything gets kicked off, right? And then when, when the Board of Ed decides, okay, it's time to get this project done, then you vote on it, let's do possible elementary school. And then you send it off to Joint Special and they take care of it. Regardless of what happens at capital improvement, you always have that option to request a, a project to be taken on. It's ideal, and we, and we try to coordinate it so it kind of arrives at the same time. But Pleasant, that's been on our capital improvement plan since the mid teens, 2015, give or take. Testing what to do with that school.
Yes.
No, I think there, that, and it's good, I mean, you're already starting to think of a plan. There's so many different elements. If you think about the system, right? Talked about indoor air quality monitoring. And you've got the energy piece. Think about different ways to look at whether, whatever we're pulling from a funding aspect, there's a lot of different angles and avenues that the system will help with, right? Depending on what we look at, where we see, you know, the biggest value within the district, that might help us, you know, from a standpoint of different funding buckets too. That in your, in your mind? I mean, yes, capital improvement is great, but if, if, if there is something else, you know, available from a grant standpoint, whatever it might be, just start thinking about what the software does, right? And what, how we can impact a district, and then that might help you too when you do. If we do. Let me show you the, just do briefly, I won't even go over everything because I know that we're running tight on time here. We've taken a lot, so we appreciate the time. Yeah, just reporting as well. Kind of an example of, remember how we had mentioned most of our buildings have the ability to be able to allow us to control, you know, heating, our AC, so on and so forth? Well, you know, rolling all of those in, if we already have them in existing buildings, we can roll that into the software. So now we're not going into six, seven, different, eight, eight different softwares. We can roll it into one. We have the ability to lock out the front keypads. We can give, you know, a four to six degree variation, so we can allow folks that are in the spaces to control heating or cooling with adjustment. And then we can also schedule. So it's the same controls that you have now in place. Where we have schools that are aging buildings that maybe aren't scheduled for, you know, a remodel for next two or three years, maybe we don't have this capability. It's as simple as replacing the controls in those rooms. And now we do have the ability to be able to control building from a distance. This is all cloud-based, it can be opened up on Sean's phone or, you know, Gary's, whatever team he's putting in charge of that. And it can also be done on a computer, iPad, but this is what that looks like.
Proze on thermostat, water boilers and everything, why heat up your water when no one's going to need it? And the same thing on the power control, we do power control for hallway lighting, outside lighting. And have, have, have that all under, you know, a smart system like this. The other thing is, is on the strategy side, this is where really we, we could hope save a lot of money. And it's really just, for example, we have a strategy template for peak demand, we have strategy template for infection control, but you could come peak demand for a sec. But you could come peak demand for a sec, Chris, and this is very simple, right? This is very simple, it's basically saying, and this is larger base, so we could hope Sean build this or Sean could actually put these flow in themselves. It's basically saying that if the kilowatt consumption is greater than 500 at 85% capacity, you know, and it's, you know, like that for five minutes, send a notification to Sean automatically, hey, you're near peak demand, you need to do something about it right now. Or we could talk to the existing control system that he has and put an automation in place already where we're dimming the hallway lighting, we're, we're, we're not cooling the bill or heating the building as well. And it could get a lot more complex as well beside this simple version. So strategy is great, on the, the report side is, is not a, not a good option. If you show them the indoor air quality sensor.
Sure.
And then we could show them the, also the energy bill as well. Here's our indoor air quality sensor. So this be at the site detail, so this could be at the particular school building. And it's giving you the overall building indoor air quality, and then it's giving you each digital contents that we're looking at. In addition, if you have multiple sensors throughout, yeah, this will provide you, well, this is a sensor, yep. So this will show you, say you have, I don't know, this is like 15 or 20 sensors in the building. You could visually see what each, the readings are at the sensor level and.
That would be you control your site, right?
Yep. So in this case, Avon Oak Community is a long-term care facility, and they have multiple sensors throughout the building. All I'm looking for are the stuff in red, anything in red is something that I might want to pay attention to right away, right?
A lot of our districts, you know, we're not always in the position to be able to do stuff like this. But I think one of the, the key points from a standpoint of having a software like this, particularly in the IAQ aspect, instead of being reactive, it's being more proactive, right? So maybe we have a staff, faculty member or student say we have bad air quality in room 101, right? Well, we collect all of this data and we're monitoring every piece of what's in the air, whether it be humidity, whether it be the VOCs, CO2, formaldehydes, we can actually set up a notification, right? So depending on how we want to set that notification up, depending on what it's reading in the air, we can actually get an alert on that. So we can actually cut off the fact of getting that notification from the teacher, from the staff, from, you know, the student. We can catch that beforehand. So that's another beauty of having that notification piece in place.
I think also from being able to store this data all the time. Saying that, hey, you know, the school's not doing what they are capable of, you at least have the data to back that up saying, look, we, we haven't had any issue with air quality as well. That's, I think, one more report, Chris, you don't need to show.
Your reports?
Yeah, just show them the building data.
Okay.
How we aggregate all the data and then make, make the dance. So this is a nice overview, instead of waiting until month end to see how much your energies costs is, you know, we could put in. Yep, so this case, if you, this only have electricity, this location. So you, your water bill, your natural gas and your water bill under one and what your energy consumption is, and then also the amount as well associated with it. Which report I'm talking about?
I do, I do.
So. That one right there, yeah. But it.
We're working on the same.
So basically, yeah, and this one is our energy, right? So now you can see how much energy you're using at the whole level, how much that's costing you. So instead of waiting till the end of the month to get it, you get it real time, you know, and then we could be proactive, say, hey, well, we're about 60% near our budget for energy, should we be doing something? And that's really it, that's, that's the whole platform in a nutshell.
Any other questions? Mr. Smith, anything? Okay, well, thank you for coming back in and we appreciate you taking the time and showing us this presentation.
I, I do have one more question. I know, you know, we have already approved some of the air, air purification for for the act of pure in the, the school. I know two of the schools are, we're working with EEI on them. You know, could you, maybe the, the board or the, the members here kind of provide a little more clarity on the two high schools? I know there's, they've been submitted for capital improvement, and I'm just, want to know a little bit more about the status of that project.
Mr. Smith, can you give us the status?
Yes, they were put in for capital improvement along with a lot of other projects. College. Believe we asked for the money in FY '24, and I don't think we. So I'll put it in again next year.
So refresh my memory, when we decided to do the schools, how many schools did we decide to do?
Done eight so far.
And how many were supposed to do?
So we, so we have eight completed, not, well, Fairgrounds is half done. The other seven schools are complete. Main Dunstable Burchill will be done when those construction jobs are done.
Right.
Little School Project, we're waiting to see how that budget thresholds out. Last time I looked, the numbers looked pretty good. So if we choose, actually Joint Special chooses and Board of Ed makes up half of that group, then you could do Carthy, Panachuk and Fairground, well, the rest of Fairgrounds. That'll give us another two, three. 12.
Refresh my memory with the high schools, was that in part of the package that we voted on? It's been a while now, okay.
Although everything you voted on has been installed.
Okay.
It was installed within a couple of months.
Our city government was very slow, sorry.
That's okay.
You know, the wheels of government is very slow, you know, you lose a wheel in the process of this, you know. So, yeah, so I think we're pretty good on it.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming back in. Okay. So now, plant operations approval, Mr. Smith, the Nashville High School's South chiller?
Yes, we have two chillers, one large, one small. At each of the two high schools, the small chiller at the South High School is developed by Leek. It's bringing in outside air and mixing in with the freon, which is not a good thing for that whole cooling process. Basically, the chiller, it's a, it's a good sized piece of equipment, it's probably three of those end tables long and wide. So they have to take it completely apart, put it all together. Before they take it apart, they have to evacuate all the freon that's in there now, store it, and then put it back in at, at the end of the process. So they provided a proposal, it's Train, the only, the manufacturer, it's the only game in town for us. I had a proposal which was attached, and I recommend that you accept the proposal from Train to replace, repair the chiller. South High School, the amount of $19,700 funding will be from building and ground maintenance, the numbers.
Anyone have any questions? Chiller, that's a good.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to recommend that the Board of Education accept the proposal from Train to repair the chiller in the amount of $19,700. Funding will come from building and ground maintenance, 91.1.22.2620.54280.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so you got that one done.
Second purchase is for the, for purchasing a LOL, which is also known as a boom lift. This was actually in last fiscal year's listing and put 35,000 aside for it. LOL is basically an arm that goes up, person sits in it, sort of like a bucket truck sort of thing, except this is a tow behind. And we can use it to other tall objects, parking lot lights, windows, that sort of thing. We change out the lights on the light poles, that takes two people, and two people don't fit into a little bucket and hold the light that's going in. So this coupled with a bucket truck enables to do that work. The report that the Alaman, city approved the bucket truck that we put in for last month, the new international dump trucks, large trucks, and then the F-350 with a plow and sander. So those have all gone through the process and we're, we're good. We're still waiting for the kitchen box van to arrive, that's not due till November. And then of this, the last thing we need to get that we, you've been told, don't even bother, talk to us till next month, in September, is another cargo van for the tradespeople, still on our list, though. Probably October, I'll bring that forward. Back to this one, we, we called all around, we, we talked to four vendors, we got quotes from two of them. And four of the two was from Q's Equipment. Or recommend the Board of Ed accept the proposal from Q's Equipment to purchase a Nifty Lift TM34TG in amount of $31,995. Funding will be from the city's FY '23 SURF account. Again, that's less than what they allocated, which was 35,000.
Any questions? So I will recommend that the Board of Education accept the proposal from Q's Equipment to purchase a Nifty Lift TM34TG in the amount of $31,995. Funding will be from the city's FY '23 SURF account. Second. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 On the poll, motion carries. Okay, that was easy tonight, Mr. Smith, wasn't it?
Yes. I believe I'm done.
Okay, now the next on the agenda is the high school history purchase, book purchase.
So as you saw in the memo, it was just really an update of, on the process of what happened over the course of the last two years. So it's really updating the, the committee on really just where we, where we stand. So as you see in the, in the memo, books were purchased in the spring of 2022. Upon receipt, they were kind of flimsy, and so the high school department chairs and Mr. Poska have been working with the publisher to exchange those books for an online version. And then the switch there was to use operating funds instead of SO funds, just because it's a multi-year project over, a multi-year purchase agreement, six years in SO can't be used. And then the last part that we're still working on right now is that it's always good to have a book in students' hands when it's, so the high school teachers are asking for a classroom set. So we're hoping, once we get the final cost in from the publisher, we'll bring it to the board. But we wanted to apprise the board of where we currently stand and some switches to use an SO funds and operating budget. Mr. Poska's been working with the high school teachers over the last year or so, making sure we can make this switch.
We're not voting, right?
No, it's just an update.
Perfect transition to the Chromebooks. That's next.
Strategic.
Hi, everybody. All right, so I'm sure you've been waiting all night for me to talk about this. So district is going to recommend that we buy Chromebooks, 1,000 Chromebooks for Bloom. Instead of IT insiders this year, they came in at a much better price for the amount of $234,000. And we compared prices with IT insiders and CDW. So Chromebooks from Bloom is the best option for the district.
Question, and you know, I'm consistent.
Bar consistent.
I know, that's what many people said, well, the time I've been on all these boards, Mr. Johnson's always consistent. So, how many Chromebooks now are going home with our students? Roughly.
At each level, let's see, so the high schools have roughly 3,200 students and then another probably around 5,500-ish, I would say, are going home with students as, for the one-to-one initiative.
And what about the middle school and the elementary school?
Middle schools are part of the one-to-one initiative, so it's six through 12.
The reason I'm asking is because tomorrow in policy, there's a recommendation to rescind JICT, and that was the Student Guardian Chromebook Agreement. And they want to rescind it, Mr. Poska. And my feeling is if Chromebooks are still leaving the building and going home, I don't want to be caught in the situation that we had during COVID, that they come back in pieces. There's no responsibility, there's no accountability. And just to rescind it, I mean, when these Chromebooks are leaving the building yet, I think it's not the right thing. So that's why I'm asking, question.
I can answer that as, do we have a fee for textbooks? So if we lose textbooks in the schools, is there a $25 fee that we ask the students to pay for textbooks? So I don't believe we do, right? So, and the textbooks in some cases are just as expensive as a Chromebook. So I, I think we're looking as, at this as a way of like equity for students because not every student has, is, you know, has the same socioeconomic status in the district, so.
But we also said with this agreement that if they could not afford to pay that $25, we would work with them. And that means work with them, that we would probably waive the fee.
Right, but we also saw when we did like a soft rollout in the fall that when we wanted to at the high schools, people didn't pay the fee and Chromebooks didn't go home with students. It was a very small amount, in the hundreds even, that Chromebooks didn't go home with students. So we, in, in order to, as Dr. Andre's letter to the, to the community today, we're trying to bring technology, you know, into the classroom and have a 21st century approach to how we, we look at education. So I think we looked at the $25 fee as an obstacle, and we want to give them more opportunities at this time.
Back to Andre, do you have a comment?
No, I, I think Mr. Rodriguez highlighted a, a few of it, but there's other policies in place about like damage and excessive responsible use agreement. So, you know, if a, if a student is maliciously destroying a, a computer, like that's a whole, same thing if they were defacing a textbook, there's ways that the administration deals with that. So same thing, I think, where Mr. Rodriguez said, there's ways to enforce inappropriate use as opposed to looking at it as a deterrent. So, and a lot of our Chromebooks are old, the ones that are going like home. If any kind of resale, they're probably not even worth $50 at this point. And so charging someone $25 for something that's worth $50, like in resale, is not, you know, it's, it's going to cost us more than to re, to replace it. So again, I think it is a, an equity issue. There are other policies and procedures in place that can, can be put in place if a student is maliciously destroying a, a Chromebook.
And we, and we have addressed damage by students this year. So I've worked with building principals of students who have destroyed Chromebooks and we've built them appropriately for the cost of the device. So it's not like we, we aren't holding students accountable when there is malicious damage, so. Or even intentional loss or, or sold, because we, we have the ability to see like if a Chromebook's been on our network with, recently even. So, you know, if, if we're finding a student is, keeps, keeps on forgetting, forgetting their Chromebook or whatever, we, we can figure out, like, has this been on recently, has it been on our networks? And then we can, you know, then, then the building principals can ask, or even teachers can ask, you know, you know, deeper questions to the students to see like what, what's going on, so.
And I know it'll come up tomorrow night, but we surveyed different districts and some, some districts have a policy charging $25, but most do not. I mean, when it first rolled out, unfortunately, to one, like, to be fully one-to-one, we're about 10 years behind. And like, this is old hat for some districts and they're not charging anymore. So it's, when it was first, everyone. When it was first, everyone's going one to one, these policies came out and it's again, it's just. A way most districts are operating right now. And that twenty five dollars isn't much of a deterrent. So I think that'll be discussed a lot tomorrow night.
The reason why I had this written was because we couldn't figure out where some of the Chromebooks went. How the condition of them came back. And because accountability.
So, but I think that's a different question, right? I think there's a lot more that we're looking at to make sure. We know where like if. You know, Chromebook one is assigned to Paula Johnson, and we know Chromebook one is assigned to Paula Johnson, and that's more of that. Record keeping and making sure that when it gets returned, that was the condition it comes back in. So I think that's more record keeping and the accountability accountability of that in that aspect.
So what happened, and I understand during COVID, we had no accountability. Do we not have any record keeping? Back then?
There was record keeping back then. It was held at the school level. Well, now we have, we've put in more systems and SOPs to to have. I would say a better record keeping system than what we did. We stood up in about six days. So. We've had more time to think about this and put in more procedures in place.
Dr. Andre, do you want to send me? Could you please send me the other policies? So I can review them before tomorrow night's meeting, because I'd like to see how that everything is integrated together. Because I know that I worked really hard to get this policy in place. I had to jump through hurdles. Because I felt that there was no accountability. That we weren't tracing back on the some of the Chromebooks that came in that were busted, they were keyboards were taken out. There was. They were just, I'm not going to go into everything that came back, how they came back. And that's how this policy came into existence. Because we're spending. Two hundred, excuse me, two hundred and thirty four thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars on Chromebooks. We have to be accountable to the taxpayers and say to them. You know, we're spending all this money on these Chromebooks. We have to be, we need to know that they're going to come back in the same. Yeah, people have accidents, things happen. But some of them came back beyond repair.
And I don't think anybody's saying that we're not going to hold anybody accountable. So I just want to be clear on that. By rescinding that policy does not mean that a student or a family. Has free reign of what they can and can't do with that Chromebook. If it comes back broken, the school district, as Mr. Rodriguez said. We have billed students to say, this is the cost. You maliciously damaged. A device and we've billed families this year. So I want to be clear that rescinding that policy does not mean that we're. Negating or condoning any type of inappropriate behavior. By our students, we will still hold the students accountable, and I think the systems are more in place now than they were in the years past. I can't explain what happened a couple of years ago if those students, if Chromebooks came back and the and the administration didn't hold those families. Accountable or that student accountable. You know, that's that's to me is different than a policy. They should have held the people accountable for it.
Well, that's why a policy came in, because we weren't doing that.
It's part of J I C T is the full policy has not been rescinded, just the technology portion of it, correct? Just the technology fee portion of it.
It's on, yeah, it's the part, the whole thing that had to do with the Chromebooks, I believe.
I think it's just a fee.
Just a fee.
That's just a fee that there.
Right, because I because I was one of the authors of that policy and. The majority of that minus the few sentences about a fee is about accountability. Regarding Chromebooks and and how we use technology or how we we should use technology for the students and.
Well, what do we do when a Chromebook gets returned? And the family can't afford to pay for the damages? What do we do in that instance?
Depends on the situation. Again, was it an accident on the damage? Was it malicious? And then we work with the family to see what the cost is. So it can take time. It's the same thing we might do with a textbook. So, I mean, again, if a student accidentally dropped the computer and it was broken, it's an accident, it wasn't malicious. Then we might say it was an accident and we fix it. It's each case, it's a case by case scenario. A kid throws it against a wall, we're going to charge the family. They can't afford it. We might come up with a way that the family can pay it back over time.
We have, we've had broken Chromebooks long before even COVID and. The district has absorbed the cost of those and that was intentional. I mean, more more non intentional damages, whether it's a. Mousepad, broken screen, unintentional drops. Even. Just scenarios like that. Those are things that have come out of, you know, the IT department's operating budget to replace those screens and mousepads and keyboards and. The whole thing. So like those, those are, these are fixable devices up to a certain point. We're not going to put an eighty dollar screen in a. Ninety dollar worth Chromebook. So. That's just what the nature of the Chromebooks are.
Right. Before COVID, I wasn't here. That's sworn in in twenty twenty. And when the Chromebooks are at the end of their life. Are we giving them out to agencies so they can pass them out in the community?
Yep, we've done the United Way the past few years, and I think total, it's been over twenty four hundred Chromebooks that have been given out to the community.
I think that's wonderful, but I'm just concerned with our students, you know. I'm not saying the student's bad. I don't want anybody to think that. I'm just saying that things happen and, you know, we worked hard on that.
I think it's a different time, too. We have students coming back to the buildings every day. We're not losing students. We're more or less concerned about devices at this time. So. If we didn't have FaceTime with the students like we do, like we did back in COVID, I think it would, it was a different time than we are facing right now.
Anyone have any comments, Ms. Brown?
I had some questions specifically about. The motion for tonight. The. So how many Chromebooks do we currently have? And I guess my question is, why do we need a thousand right now? Because I thought we had. In our possession more than we have students. Is that incorrect?
That is still correct. So what the plan was, and the plan is for the for the one to one is we want to have a hundred and twenty percent. At schools for incidentals and having just some spares on hand at the individual building. So let's say Elm. Let's say they have a thousand students, we want to have twelve hundred Chromebooks available to them, just just in case. So and that's going to be like that at. Fairgrounds, Penner Chuck, Elm, North and South as well. So we also aren't. We're trying not to touch the ELL Special Education cards. NTC and other grant funded cards that that were purchased, just because. Those are purchased for a reason for those for those students and departments. So. These are. Classroom cards that are being used for the most part to go home with students.
For a student who.
Yep.
Machine or anything.
Yep.
All right, thank you. And what is the timeline for receiving these?
Already received.
Oh, excellent. Well, that's good to know.
Mr. Donovan and I were working on this. We missed some timelines, but we had, we just just to get them ready for the one to ones, just so we're ready, we had to purchase them and they are. Already enrolled, so.
Excellent. And that's what my next question was. Are you going to have time and manpower to get them set up for student safety? All right.
Boom shakalaka.
All right. Thank you very much. Fantastic. I'll make this recommendation.
Okay.
I moved to approve the purchase of one thousand H P G nine E E eleven inch Chromebooks. And licenses from Bloom for two hundred thirty four thousand eight hundred ninety dollars using the fiscal year twenty four budgeted funds. From account nine one point one point nine nine two 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 five seven one two two one.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the ELL contract.
So as you see in the in your memo, we received. Three bids for some ELL contractual services. It took us so long to come before the board is that we submitted these three contracts to the Department of Justice for their review. And. Like us, they also supported. The contract with. Reseps, the Wisconsin Center for Education Products and Services, who are affiliated with the. University of Wisconsin at Madison. So this is a contract that will help us. Fulfill the obligation to the DOJ report and the recommendations specifically around tier one instruction for not only our ELL students, but for all students. This upcoming year, they'll be working with our building administrators on creating data systems. They'll have a full day of professional development with our administrators. They'll also be working with all of our schools. Each. Each teacher per the DOJ needs ten hours of ELL professional development that's in person in this. Agency will be will be providing those services. So they'll be bringing in fifteen coaches across all eighteen schools on our professional development days. As well as three early release days. So we're really looking forward to working with them. They come highly recommended recommended from the Department of Education. So in all of our conversations with them, really. High level professionals know their background and they've been doing some work in. In Maine. Another district in. New Hampshire, but. So we were able to talk to some of those teachers and they really enjoy the partnership. So just a couple of. Topics that they'll be. Bringing to our to our teachers as. The first professional development is building a capacity to bridge content learning and language development. They'll also be doing some professional development around the. The foundational practices for mainstream classes, creating inclusive learning environments. And also designing lessons that integrate content learning and language development. So we're really happy to receive the DOJ's approval and then bring this recommendation to. The board this evening.
Any questions? Laffey, I had to think your name.
I was gonna say.
You're so quiet here.
I don't know much about. HVAC, so. Experts. So the has the Department of Education signed off on the New Hampshire Learning Initiative?
No, the one that they actually approved was the WESAPS.
So that's all we're voting on right now?
Yeah, so that's our recommendation is for the WESAPS is for the two hundred and twelve thousand. Just the contract.
Okay, and then the New Hampshire, NHLI, we won't vote on that?
So the other, the other two proposals that came in weren't approved by the DOJ. So we'll continue to work with NHLI on Portrait of a Learner. But when we were trying to do is bring in the NHLI. And the work around the Portrait of a Learner, and if they could have the capacity to do this work. It was our estimate, number one, the cost was really high. And number two is that. Just if NHLI had the bandwidth to actually do it. So they had to bring in a lot more, it was. A lot more fragmented, so. But we still have a good partnership with them.
Questions, concerns? Okay. Laffey, would you like to make the motion on this?
Sure. Move to approve the contract with the Wisconsin.
Center for Education Products.
Yes, Wisconsin Center for Education Products and Services. For ELL professional development and coaching for the year twenty twenty three to twenty four school year. In an amount not to exceed. Two hundred and twelve thousand six hundred and twenty five dollars using Essar funding and Title III grant.
Now seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Anything else on that? Okay, so now we can go into the credit card update.
Yes, I've been quiet tonight. It's been nice to sit and listen. Okay, so as as we do, here is the quarterly credit card report. You'll notice there's a couple of large items on here. And typically, when we've used the larger items, for example, in May, there was eleven one thousand one forty three. That was for a garbage disposal at one of the kitchens. And to get the one that fit in at as quick as we could, we had to buy it online and therefore use the credit card. You'll notice there was a also in May, a bunch of travel conferences and seminars. That was pretty, that was all grant funded for the most part. But there's some significant dollars in for the quarter. The electrical supplies in April was a motor that Gary Connors needed. The HVAC was a train compressor that was, you know, once again, the only place we could find one quickly. And then there was a software that we purchased. I can't think of the name of it off the top of my head, which one it was, but it's an annual subscription. And then the miscellaneous equipment, the six thousand eight eighty is for athletic golf bags, actually, for the high school. Now, the golf bags don't stay with the student. They use it and then they give it back like they do with most things. So that's pretty much what we spent the money on. It's it's higher than usual, but basically a few. Few large items that we needed to buy online. You'll probably start seeing more of that as that's happening in all our lives. And there was a high travel amount over the spring, early summer that should start to to decline as the school year goes on. Questions?
No. So we're good with that. Did you have a final FY twenty three forecast?
Okay, I I did not. Typically, I give you the big sheet that you really enjoy. But I wasn't, I didn't, I didn't finalize it because the final labor numbers have not been booked yet. City's a little undermanned in finance, and so they haven't. Booked all their entries yet for year end, which typically by now is always done. So that I don't have the final labor numbers for all the teachers that get paid through the summer. So that's the big number. But what I can tell you is, in general, based upon my estimate. We should have an excess of about two million dollars. Seven hundred thousand of that, we voted to. Put deferred deferred maintenance. And. I am also going to request the board to approve another escrow. For IT for firewalls related to the security breach that we had. They feel it's a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. If we can pay that. Get the firewalls in place, that will strengthen our. Technology to potentially prevent another. Other.
mishap.
Let's call it that, sure.
Mishap.
So I'm hoping we can, we can at least vote to. Escrow those funds. The Alderman will have to approve it. But I figure with the with the two million dollars, we're asking for less than half of it. For escrows and the million dollars will still. Be revert back to the the city coffers, so to speak, and hopefully towards reducing the tax rate.
And I'm sure nobody was upset that we didn't have that sheet tonight. The final forecast, no offense, but I'm sure nobody was.
It's one of my favorite things of the year.
I know, I know. It is. Anybody have any questions?
Nope.
We're not doing the approval of the escrow funds this evening, right?
Well, if you could. Make a motion to approve a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for IT. Firewalls. Be escrowed. And then so it'll get, you guys will vote on it and then we'll move it.
I have one question about that. Is. The firewall, that's a hardware or a software? Is that like an annual subscription or is that a one time purchase?
It is, it's equipment. Most of the one ninety, about a hundred and sixty thousand of it is equipment. So it's a one time. The rest of it is an annual. Top of it.
I'll make a motion to approve a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the firewall. Is that okay? That's good enough.
Yeah.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any names?
Motion carries.
Okay. So the July forecast, there's nothing on here?
July, I mean, when I, when I looked at the numbers, there's a lot of the. They haven't done the entries. It's one month. There's hardly any activity. So I I took a look at everything. The cell cellular thing wasn't paid. It first month of the year, so there's really not a lot, not a lot to. there's really not a lot, not a lot to speak about.
Okay. So we can move past that quickly. And we can go right into the.
Right into the transfers.
Report.
So what we have for transfers is some of the entries were actually booked in the month of June, but they were prepared in the month of July. So the first one is the athletic revenue. So this year, the athletic revenue collected was 170,000. So when we do the budget, there's a credit in the budget. So that's, this entry brings the monies back into the operating budget and takes it out of where we put it in a special revenue fund. The next one was the adult ed special revenue fund. That actually went negative. We had been charging the secretary for adult ed to that fund because it had excess funds back a few years ago. Now it's, it's kind of used up. We've moved it during the budget that we put together for this school year. That person's been moved back to the operating budget. So this fund should get back to a profitable measure, but it, there was a cost of 7,000. So I basically took it out of there and funded it with the operating budget. The next one is the food service. This was the total. It was $10,000, basically, of, the interesting thing with, this was the the amount of monies that were not paid by students, potentially faculty, but I would suggest mostly all students. The way the, even though we have excess funds in the foods service special revenue fund, you can't charge your unpaid to your food service account per the government. So we had to take money from the operating budget to pay off these. Now, the high schools do a good job with their Meals Matters, and they pick up a lot of the fees. And but it seemed like the bigger amounts this year were at the middle schools and a couple of the elementary schools. So we try to collect all this money. We send out, you know, voicemails, and we put things in students' bags and stuff. But, you know, it gets to the point where we're not going to chase the kid home to collect the lunch money. But the total for the year was 10,000. It's typically been a little bit less than that, six to seven, was a little bit higher this year.
I'm kind of wondering if maybe that has something to do with the security breach as well, because there was a little time there where you couldn't go, because I tried to do it. You couldn't go update your kid's food account. So that might have affected it this year.
It's possible, yes. And that was in the spring, which, you know, gave us less time to collect at the end of the year.
And some of the students that did not pay, did we reach out to see if they needed free and reduced lunches?
Oh, yes. Yes. And we even use the homeschool coordinators at the at the schools where there's a language difference. So we try. It was, hopefully, it'll be a little less next year, but.
Yeah, it's to the point, if I just may. Food service has been working closely with the schools. They don't want, like, they see it as a red flag. So what is going on with the families? So the social worker homeschool liaison looked at it as a point of like, we needed a conversation to find out what's going on in Mario's house or something like that. So we were trying to be more positive and proactive to see how we can help a family as opposed to that negative, you owe us $50 and we're cutting you off. So we changed the tune a little bit this year. So I'm sure if we contact the schools, they give us all the notifications, everything that they were trying. So I have to commend Delia and her team, along with our social workers, guidance classes, building administrators, for being very proactive in trying to collect the money.
Okay, the next one is the facility rental. So for this year, we collected 160,000 in facility rentals. A bunch of that is used to pay overtime to the various custodians that fill the roles. But there is profit there. And like I said, that's another item that we budget. The two negative items we budget are the athletics fees and the facility rental. And then the last two, one is the National Technology Center. They just needed to move it from supplies to equipment repair. And the very last one is Amherst Street School. They're buying a projector. So they moved it from supplies to equipment. That, the transfers, and that does need to be approved because it's over $5,000.
Any, any questions?
No.
I'll move to accept the FY24 July transfer report.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And that's it.
Any comments?
Yep. Anybody? Donovan, you have anything, Mr. Dr. Andre?
Nope.
Any comments? Laffey, you'd like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And we are adjourned at 7:44. Thank you.